Hi, good morning. Today's April 4th, 2019. We're about to begin today's work session. If we could start by standing for the pledge. Jim, you want to leave us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just one announcement. We had met with the Landmarks Preservation and the Architectural Review Board, with the board the other day, and we had discussed that we would maybe discuss some of it at this work session. But we just got some of the information from them late yesterday afternoon where there wasn't enough time for people to be able to take a look at it, so we will schedule it at next Thursday's work session.
Okay.
Okay. And if we have to, we can actually, special board meeting if we're going to make a decision at that point. But just to give everybody a little bit of time to look at it. All right, so today's first discussion is the Comprehensive Plan, RFP, so I will turn it over to you, Jeff. This is, well, just a little update. The last time it was done was in 2003. I think the Comprehensive Plan had called for an update every, at least every five to 10 years, which it has not been undertaken during that time, so I think there's a strong need for it to be able to look at what's done in the past, what was done in the past, and the zoning that was put in place for that, and to see that if we're still on the right track from the previous Comprehensive Plan. So we are asking to do an RFP for an update to the plan, and I will turn it over to you, Jeff. If you could maybe just, none of us were here at the time, and I know you weren't here at the time, but just explain a little bit about what the Comprehensive Plan is and the process for doing that, and what an update would entail.
Good morning, everyone. As Laura said, the last time the town updated its Comprehensive Plan was in 2003. That does not mean the town has been negligent in following the Comprehensive Plan or further updating the Comprehensive Plan. The town has undertaken a large number of studies since 2003, such as the Wading River Hamlet Study and a whole host of other amendments based upon the recommendations of this plan. That's a critical part to what I just said, based upon the recommendations of the Comprehensive Plan, because every action by this board is supposed to be consistent with the findings and recommendations of this plan. And that's per town law. That's not Jeff Murphy is fusing planning mantra. That's town law. That's in Section 272-A of town law. So I've worked in municipalities where they did not think that this document was the Bible that I said it was, and it is the Bible. This is the foundation to which all of our decisions in this town, whether it's zoning changes, whether or not it's a change in a social program, road improvements, road widening, is supposed to be based upon what the recommendations of this document contains. So this is a really critical document, and the town did a really good job. And I remember this because we got a copy in Southampton, and we were commenting and reviewing it, how comprehensive and thorough it was at that time. Again, at that time. Here we are 16 years later. It's outdated. It really needs to be thoroughly reviewed from beginning to end. And those sections include things, and my first recommendation is, we've got to take a look at our population projections. Where is this town heading in terms of population growth? It's interesting, I had a phone call from John Shapiro a few weeks ago, who was the planner instrumental in producing this document, and he was telling me what their beliefs for the town, what their projections for town were going to be back then, and I'm listening to him from his vision from 15, 16, 17 years ago, and what it's actually has been. Some of it has been dead-on, some of it, the market changed, the economy changed, the population changed. Zoning hasn't happened. A lot of this was based upon the implementation of the EPCAL. Here we are, 2019. That still hasn't happened, so the recommendations based upon that happening have not happened. So it, one thing I think we should do is, as we go forward with this, is to bring John back just as a future work session, just to hear what his thoughts and recommendations were back when he was putting this together. It's fascinating to hear him.
Well, I remember, I mean, I wasn't on the board then, but I remember reading a lot of the studies that were done, and the Hamlet Studies that were done, and the breakout groups that got together and created for their own. I mean, it was very comprehensive when it was done. I think that should probably have to be mirrored again as well.
And it still holds its weight today, other than the fact that the information and data is out of date. So population is an important one, employment projections, as I just talked about. Farmland preservation strategies were a huge part of this in 2003, still is, which is why Richard Weins is here. They really want the TDR component to be analyzed again. I think that's important. Not just in terms of farm, in terms of the soil protection strategies, but also as the agriculture, as an industry.
Well, the industry has changed a lot in the last 15 years.
Absolutely has. Downtown development, obviously, has been a hot topic lately. I think that really needs to be fully vetted out, not just the DC one, but all the DC zoning districts. Capital improvements. If I was critical of this document in one way, that would be our capital improvements program, because we don't have one. And we really need to link that in with the Comprehensive Plan, so that we, going forward with capital projects, we can actually have a capital improvement program, a capital improvement plan, and a capital improvement budget. The town's 1977 wetlands inventory needs to be updated. We're using data from 1977. I think we can do a little better.
We find that all the time when we're doing planning work sessions, that wetlands have changed over the years. They're not there anymore.
They weren't identified.
Right. We never really did compete at the LWRP. I know we were looking at that, and we never really competed that.
Jeff, something like this wouldn't look at coastal erosion?
That would be one of it, sure.
Those have certainly changed. Coastlines have changed.
Yes, shrinking. Sea level rise, resiliency in planning, huge issue.
So that would also be looked at.
Alternative energy demands. Who would have thought about solar farms back in 2003? Where, look at the industry today, it's huge. Wind farms, we weren't even thinking about that in 2003. Parks and recreation, that's going to be based upon where our future population demands are true. So those are just some of the elements included in the, in the, in the plan. As we go forward, when we select it, it's going to be a project team. There's going to be expertise from a variety of, a traffic engineer.
You say traffic also, yeah.
Right. And there are going to be breakout groups and committees for each one of these. So this is going to be an extensive effort. You're looking at least, once the RFP is awarded and they get initial background plan started, you're looking at at least a two-year process.
If it's done right.
It'll go by fast.
It will. You'll look back in the, in the two years, and you'll go, how did we get to where we are so quickly? It's going to be.
But you're right, the town, town with all its planning changes over the last decade or 15 years has been very good to make sure that it marries and meets what that plan was. And we have made some substantive changes to it as needed, but you're right. I think a total, a total look at it is probably the best.
I think that's, that's the key. It's the comprehensive overview of the whole town. I think, I think that there has been, you know, changes here and there, you know, to go along with the Comprehensive Plan and things, you know, just our solar code, things like that. But, but I think it's, it's time, as Jeff, as you're saying, you know, for population growth, for the market, for farmland preservation, you know, needs that comprehensive overview, and I think it's long overdue.
Oh, I think so. I just know it's, I know the price tag came with it, and then 2008, and then they crashed. I mean, this town reeled for five years, just trying to, and we didn't have the relevant money to really look at it.
So one thing that I would like to see in the RFP is that the, we can do it in phases. So I think Route 58 is a priority in repurposing those big box stores on Route 58. So I would like to see it broken out in different sections and hamlets of the town as to the RFP, and I would like the right to reserve to move forward on going through, maybe over a five-year period, so that we're not locking a consultant into working for the town, and we drag it out for 10 years. So I would just like to say, you know, your contract will consist of a five-year layout, but work it in phases and start with Route 58.
Well, if we make a decision to put it into phases, I think we should discuss the priorities.
Well, I guess, Jeff, to you, what would, what would be the advantage of fa, for phases? Or could you, could you target certain areas while still doing the whole complete Comprehensive Plan within those two years? It's just a matter of, you would have different teams doing different areas, but it all can be done simultaneously, correct?
It's all going to be done concurrent at the same time. You've got to be careful, though, because, for example, if you go forward with the transportation element, you really can't do that until your land use element's done, because you don't know what your recommendation is going to come out of that land use committee. But the one thing I know, Richard was talking to me about before the meeting, was the TDR component. Perhaps that can be done as part of the first phase, because you're not going to see a lot of spin-off or, you know, consequences of, in terms of sending receiving areas or ratios. So that might be something that we can be done as part of the first phase.
But would that be part of the RFP where you would, when you put it out, you would say, what is your plan to do it? Whether it's, it's phases, or whether it is, you know, how the logistics of it would work? Doesn't that, wouldn't that not depend on the, the amount of people in the, in the, whoever puts in a bid for it? They would, you know, give us some specs on how to do that?
I would want them to come to this board and ask you, what are your priorities? And then they'll tell you what the consequences of it could be, that yes, it can be done, or if you do it, you know, it may have to wait, because you can't put transportation before land use, for example.
That's what I'm concerned about. I mean, I understand we all have our priorities. I get it. And, but I think when a company comes in and they're looking at the Comprehensive Plan comprehensively, as a whole, as a whole document, we, once they get it done, we can extrapolate out what we think is a target. But I don't know whether the study groups are going, I don't know if they can just study one aspect.
I think population and population.
I was going to say that, because that one called for, I think, a total bill of about 45,000 people in the town we're at, which we're not even close to. And I don't know that we ever will be, but.
When we keep taking, like, development off the tax rolls for farmland preservation or other open space, that takes the population, and population goes down.
Right.
But I got to tell you.
And the tax levy goes up.
So, and that's what, the key part of this is economic viability in terms of making sure that, because all of our budgets are supposed to be based upon this. If our population keeps decreasing and our open space keeps going up, the taxes are going to be reflected accordingly.
Southampton.
Well, then you also have the potential for the development of EPCAL. So that's another, something else that's figured into that equation, and your market, your market, you know, changes a bit, a bit there. So I think that, that, but, so my question is, and I know, Jody, you were saying phases, five-year. What is, and you were saying two years, Jeff, so what is, what, what is the difference between those two, two projections? Two-year or a five-year phase? How, how, how does that play out in an RFP?
We would include a paragraph in there that the town is desirous to have a phase in and analyzing the different categories that they will study, and see what not there you can place certain priorities in terms of how they conduct the study, so we can go forward with implementations, perhaps sooner than later. But I would, I would definitely want to include that as a paragraph in there, so they, when they respond back to us, they can respond to that specific question.
And also, it's for monetary concerns, too. I mean, the study is anticipated to cost between a half a million and a million dollars, so if we can spread it out over a period of time, just like we did with the 2004 Comprehensive Plan, where it started in 1998, I believe, and then it was, the zoning was finally adopted in 2004. So that was a six-year period. So I think that, you know, right now, there's definitely a need with repurposing the stores on Route 58, and I think there's a good opportunity there for a transfer of development rights and to help the hospital with housing. And I think that you can create green spaces and walkable scenarios along Route 58 to lead to the hospital. So, and parking is also an issue, so a parking district might be something that we would look at on Route 58 also.
And we don't need to make a decision on that right now, because I'd want the consultant to come in and talk to you.
Yeah, I like the idea of sitting down with whoever is doing the study and discussing with them, because they may have advice for certain priorities, and they've done it before, and I like the idea of us all sitting together and having that discussion.
I love 58, especially East 58, I think is, is, is probably the huge need for repurposing.
And I.
Garbage districts and parking districts, all that's needed up there.
And I think how that relates to downtown. I mean, I think that's, that's, you know, part, part of all of this.
So that's why I'm just saying, if we, if we said, these are the areas that we would like to study, and then we would like to sit down with you and discuss which area we're going to go first, and what the town board is thinking, and then, you know, they can move forward. But at least they know that we're not going to be paying them a million dollars within two years, that if we want to spread it out over a longer period of time, we can.
Right, and pay as you kind of go.
Why wouldn't we get a full proposal first?
We will.
So, so, and then the discussion happens for the phases. So I think, I think, I think to limit them as a phase in to start off, I think we should get the full proposal first, and then, and then, and then break it out, as opposed to doing it.
I think they have to do the, because there's so many moving parts, like you said, marrying each other, that you can't, you can't just pull out, it's got to be a.
But we need to reserve the reins to not do it all at once. That's all, in the RFP.
So my question to you, board, is, we're going to, we're going to give a copy to the planning board tonight to get their input. How long do you want to have people chew this over and get their comments back to me?
I would say this is, I would say not this work, not the next work session, but the following, the following week. I know that falls into East. I know we may postpone one of them, but within the next, you know, two weeks. The one other thing, I know that on page three, we had talked about the central business district for downtown. Just the, all the DC one through five as, as one district.
Yep.
We're on to page three.
Yeah, page three. And then you're going to, I think one of the other things was to include the market analysis in here.
So you want your comments by what, what the?
Two weeks.
Well, prior, prior to the.
Fourteen is eighteen, right?
Prior to the two weeks, so that, like, if you could just, between now and the next. Yeah, you know, next 10 days, two weeks, to, to give Jeff your input. And then we can meet back here again at the work session to review this.
So that would be the eighteenth?
That's what I put. It would be the twelfth, be the.
Or eighteen.
Let's do one week after the eighteenth, because I think, this way, everybody. So that would be April.
Twenty-fifth.
April 25th.
Say before April 25th.
Yes. So if everybody could have their comments in by, by the 22nd, and this way it gives Jeff a couple, Jeff a couple days.
You consolidate everything.
Yeah.
Excellent.
I'm so excited about this. This is great.
Well, you'll be excited for the next 36 months.
All right.
This is a long time.
We're good.
Any other questions from anybody?
No, just have to read through it.
And try and figure out where we're going to get the money from.
Well, I think we have, we have some money set.
That's been the hindrance all these years.
I think we have some money set aside from one of the projects that was done for, that was about a fair amount of money that I think that we can use towards this in the budget.
I find anything worth doing, we find the money for, so that's another.
Well, we, that's why we did Hamlet Studies, like the Wading River Hamlet Study, that cost us $50,000, and we did it so knowing that we needed to address certain areas that were being threatened by drought.
That was an update to this particular, so now we're doing a master update.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
What's with the green? You guys?
All right. Now we're going to, it's the future use of the Tag Building, so those involved would like to come up?
Green. It's the green team.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
I love green.
Great on her, too.
So this is, this is the Tag Building. We have Day Haven in, in one portion of it, and the other portion of it, the, you guys were approached about possibly putting a daycare.
Preschool.
Preschool in, into the building, so this is a presentation about a possible use for that area, so.
Yes. We have met with the preschool owner that is interested in.
I knew you were going to get the louder sign.
Yeah, this is the mic here. You just have to be loud so they can hear you.
That is interested in utilizing the space. She is very interested. She's looking to get out of her current location at the end of the school year. So if possible, she would like to move forward as quickly as possible. She ran into a hurdle there where she couldn't extend her day. She wants to go to a full day.
And her current location.
The location, she was having some issues with, with getting all the proper permits. So she had approached me. She's formerly an instructor for the Recreation Department. She's taught kitty fit, fitness classes, and so that's where I originally know her from. You know, and she's very impressive, and.
How many students in her preschool?
Currently, she has 20 students, but she is looking to expand.
And full day for all of them, or part day for some, full day for some?
It's really kind of flexible, because right now she just has a nine to 12 program. But she has a lot of parents that are interested in going to a full-day program. And some of them are only there three days a week, some are there two, you know.
And these are preschools, so they're like third and fourth-years, I mean, I'm sorry, three or four-year-olds?
Correct.
Starting at two, I think she.
That, yeah.
Two to, two to four.
Two to four, she does, okay.
So she gears to the needs of the family.
Correct, yes.
Now, would this be the northwest part of the building, or where, which side of the building? That would be the west side of the building.
When you walk in.
When you walk into the right, yeah.
My daughter went to preschool there.
So. So my question is, as far as going, and this would be an all-year, a year-round program? So she does, so it's for parents that are working, basically?
I like, now, the only thing that sticks out to my, I mean, I like the fact that you're mixing daycare, whether it's young or old. The needs are very similar, but we're not overcrowding any one element? They'll coexist. There's enough room there for them to coexist.
Yes. Yeah, she currently is interested in using two rooms to start. There's three rooms that are open.
I think there's three here.
Well, there's certainly a need for it in the town. If you talk to people with the young children, they'll, they'll tell you there is a need. It's tough to get into places. It's also very expensive, but it's, it's hard to get in, so.
I have friends that would not only drop off their children, but would drop off their parents as well. I do.
I think it may help bring some life to the building. Maybe it would help Day Haven.
And they've, they've spoken together also, Day Haven and, and, what is the name of this group?
It's called Kidney Free Academy.
Kidney Fit?
I would think they may want to do some intergenerational things.
I think they're actually meeting today, correct?
They are actually, yes. The preschool is actually there visiting right now, today, with the Day Haven program.
And it's a mutually beneficial relationship for both age groups. They both benefit so much from the interaction.
Oh, sure, right.
It'll give some light to their life over there.
Absolutely, yeah.
I have, you know, I just have some, a couple of my concerns are that, that this is, they're moving from, from nine to 12. There's a lot of requirements when you're moving from nine to 12, because it's sort of a, considered like a nursery school or a part-time nursery school into a full-day daycare. I know there's a lot of health certificates. I know that there's, I, I believe there's quite a few hurdles that you have to reach to get certified. So is she currently certified for a full day or no?
Full day, no.
Okay, so.
Because she was unable to get the inspection properly passed, that she needed where she was in the, in the current location.
Okay.
You know, all the permits have to be in place before she can move into the building.
Correct, yes.
But I'm curious if, if the building meets the specs that are needed.
Well, she had mentioned that she could have, she's licensed by the Office for Children and Family Services. It's, and it's through the state. They could come and do a pre-op inspection.
Okay.
And they already have the building on record from the, you know, like, from previous use.
Okay.
So there may be minor things that would need to be brought back to where they, you know, where they need to be. But it should be pretty much usable and able to meet all of their guidelines.
I like this parent nights out. I like that. That's pretty cool. Worst and last Fridays of the month, you have a parent's night out where they.
It's pretty popular, surprisingly.
That's a great idea.
I guess the, the other question then, when you have things like that, what are the actual hours that they'll be there?
So it's five to eight.
But I think this is in the unit where they are now. I would just like to know the hours of operation.
That would be in a lease agreement. We would state that.
Yeah, yeah. So does anybody have any objection to, to, to starting the process? I think the first thing, you'd have to have the Child and Family Services to come in and assess the building. Are we okay with allowing that?
Absolutely. What's needed, sure.
Okay.
Of course, we got, you know, on the back end, you know, we've got to discuss lease agreement and standards of operations and the hours of, all that stuff that we have, what you, you have to do.
But I think prior to doing that, let's just, before we, you know, dive into this too much, let's make sure the building's suitable for what they're trying to do, because I know two years, two-year-olds are sometimes different than the three-year-olds, and, you know, staffing and ratio and all of this other, you know, the height of the toilets, all of that stuff that goes on, so.
And the school year is when, mid-June?
Probably the end of June. I think she would.
Well, we got time. Not much, but we got some.
Try to get in in July if possible, but I don't know. What do you think the chances are of that?
I think it'll be up to, up to her.
The building makes, I'm sure the building will make the specs.
She can, she can move things forward, so as long as she gets that presented, and then, and then, if everybody's okay with that, then we can move forward to draft a contract, and then can move forward from there. I think, you know, once they start to draft the contract, that will come up with a lot of the questions as far as what certifications needed, the hours and things like that. Once that draft is done, the board will, you know, look at it to make sure they're in agreement with what the, what the conditions are in the contract, and then can move forward.
Can I ask where her Kitty Fit currently is?
In Calverton, Calverton Commons.
Okay. Yeah, we're, right.
Now, if they're going to full day, I would assume they're probably going to be doing meals there. There's a kitchen there, right?
There is a kitchen, and currently the kitchen, the way it is in the agreement with Day Haven, the kitchen is shared common space, so.
So that's already the, currently the use.
Well, is that a full kitchen? There's not a full kitchen in there at this point, I don't think.
Yeah, but when I send my kids to daycare, I always send them with a lunch bag, so. I mean, whatever she decides she's going to do, if she wants to use the kitchen, then she's got to go to Health Department and get approval for that, and then she's got to do the menu and everything else with Food Services Unit at the Health Department, so.
But she needs to have a refrigerator. She needs to have their certain, you know, if there's medication and all of that other stuff, she'll need to, you know.
I can't imagine she doesn't know all this.
I'm sure she does.
Right.
She's anxious to meet more as well, if we want to set that up.
The biggest thing is just getting the pre-op done, and make sure that the building's okay with the state for it to be used, which it should be.
Yes.
So, okay, so go ahead and move forward with that, and then, and then as soon as they do that, like I said, then she can contact, and then we can start drafting up a contract. And then the other finer details will be worked out, and then everybody will just take a look at them, make sure that those are okay.
Okay.
All righty?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for bringing us to us.
Thank you.
I love it. Blue bus, yellow bus, all buses.
All right. Next, we will move on to the South James Ford Concession update.
Okay, Ray.
Mae's right here.
She's got issues. I don't even want to deal with it right now.
He walked out.
I will deal with it before I get out of here, I promise you.
Right.
I'm telling you. I'm not joking.
I know you're not.
What are we on?
Ray.
Oh, Judy, you talk, huh? Oh, no, Judy, is that part of it?
I'm going to start in just a second.
All right, we are ready for the James Ford Concession.
Ray away, aren't you?
I just made copies.
Excellent, because I lost mine already. I can't believe that.
Good morning, Ray.
Good morning.
I saw you all right there.
Thank you. Do you have copies?
Yeah, they're different.
Mae?
Could you just come take the copies, please?
Hey, do you need a copy?
I got it.
Okay, I'm excited. Let's go. I want to have a beer and look at the cards. You come the first thing. I don't drink beer.
Get you the copies.
One beer and wine.
Just leave them up here for everyone to.
Due to the requests of people in the community, people from, actually, I would like to ask Bill Von Helmand and John Troyon, could they come up?
If you'd like, sure.
From the Civic.
Yep, yep.
We reached out to them on this, so we want to hear what they have to say also, if you don't mind. Um, we reached out to them on this, so we wanna hear what they have to say also, if you don't mind.
Thank you very much.
Happy to have them.
We're just gonna have you guys introduce yourself.
Okay.
The camera's here too, so you don't deter.
Oh, okay. Uh, William Charles Van Helman, I'm the current president of the Greater Jamesport Civic Association, thank you for this opportunity.
Sorry to hear that.
John Troyon, a member of the Civic Association, also, uh, owner of Cuddy's Pub in South Jamesport.
Which I'm hearing, finding the good things about.
That's good.
I did, I heard the other day.
It's true, it's great, like, it is true.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's a great, great location.
Good.
Okay, um, due to community requests, um, from the East Creek Marina people, from people wanting to see something in our town similar to what other towns have had at beaches in terms of concession and entertainment. Ray and Anne Marie got together, they put something up, uh, Dillingham's involved, did a site visit. And for the South Jamesport Beach, there is a concession stand down there, a snack shack, if you will. Not suitable right now for serving hamburgers and hot dogs, it's just prepackaged stuff. So we, we originally started this endeavor looking to make it a more of a full-service concession stand for the beachgoers. So they could not just get a bag of chips, but they could get a hamburger or a hot dog. Um, similar like at Cup Sog where they have food available to the, to the people at the beach. Uh, knowing we wouldn't get that done in this first year, we kinda decided to go in a way of putting together a pilot program to see a little bit, uh, if there is in fact an interest, if it is sustainable to somebody to come in. If we went out to bid or went out to RFP for somebody to, uh, come in and take the concession stand over. We wanna make sure that it's, it's a, a process that will be rewarding to the person who does it, otherwise we're kinda spinning our wheels. And along with that same, as we, as I roll this out, we invited the civics to get involved because we wanna know, is it something that they would support or be invol, you know, be happy that's there? Or is it something that they're completely against and the people are completely against it in the area? We need to know that too. Uh, this is all important to us. So what we decided to do is we decided to go with Friday and Saturday evenings from five P M. to nine P M. From May thirty-first through September first, it's fourteen weekends. And it would be set up with a license agreement to people to come in to sell local craft beer, local wines, um, and music. And when we say music, we're not talking rock and roll bands, we're talking, uh, Tim Hubbard, Old Foggy, uh, you know.
Acoustic.
Acoustic, easy listening to music.
Amplified, though?
What's wrong with rock and roll?
It's saying that it can be amplified but not exceed eighty decibels, which I have a problem with.
If you look at, uh, the noise level chart, it does say that it wouldn't exceed eighty decibels. I handed everybody out a noise level chart, uh, seventy-five decibels is a toilet flushing, eighty decibels is an alarm clock. So, if you look at the other comparisons for things that are here, uh, if it was amplified, it would have to stay within, uh, with, under eighty decibels.
I just think it's difficult to enforce, that's all. We'll have a police officer down there every night with that.
Well, we are gonna have a police officer there.
Especially near the toilets.
For the beginning, just to see, and, and there'll be also a couple recreation department workers there.
And sound as well.
Snacks, the, the snack shack itself, um, if you look on the map, uh, the wider of the two maps, you'll see the picnic tables set up on the decking area outside. And it's, will be set up to hold approximately or hold, be set up for about sixty people to come in and listen to music, maybe have a glass of wine, uh, maybe their kids are over on the playground across the parking lot while they're listening to music and hanging out, uh, at the snack shack. So that's what we're looking to do. It's the boardwalk that goes from the snack shack, if you look at the other map, uh, to the gazebo. We would fence it off with snow fencing to keep the people contained to the area. Alcohol would not be allowed off the decking area, it would not be allowed down on the beach, it would not be allowed out in the parking lot. They would, uh, it would be contained just to the area of the snack shack on the decking there.
To, to the gazebo area or no?
Yes, to the gazebo area.
Come in through the gazebo and walk down, this is what happens.
You're gonna come in off of, um, the parking lot, whereas you'd see it on the darker map, it says food truck area. You would walk right in there and the music would be set up right on the corner of the snack shop, snack shack, and then you have, uh, picnic tables that will be there for seating. This also encompasses having two food trucks down there for those nights, uh, from five to nine again on Friday and Saturday night.
Does that, once the concession stack, you do all that?
If, if the, yes, then the food trucks would go away and the concession stand, if we had people in there. Uh, and it became a certified Department of Health kitchen, uh, then that would take over and there wouldn't be food trucks here in, in the future.
How do you regulate it to sixty people? Is there enough parking for six, sixty people?
Parking's not an issue.
Okay.
Parking's not an issue.
So that would be in the town parking lot, there would be nothing on adjoining roadways nearby where we have residential areas?
No, no, because we have the overflow for the East Creek parking lot also, if needed to be used, yes.
But, but there is no, no parking signs on, on Beach Road there.
You may have people walking there too. That would be in violation anyway.
Well, no, there, you can park there.
I know, but.
Oh, you can park there, I thought you said the no parking.
There is, there is not no parking, you can, you can park there.
Now, I've been thinking about this a lot, certainly I, I think we need to get a sense of the community.
Mm-hmm.
What the community wants, um, but, I mean, for me, I think a pilot, now you're fourteen weekends, but twenty-eight nights, right?
You're both correct, yes.
I think that's a lot for a pilot, just my personal opinion.
We can stop at any time, and I think that's what, uh, we discussed yesterday, that we're gonna do, not an RFP, but a contract, license agreement with the groups. And if we feel after the first weekend, this is not gonna work out, we can pull it at any time, so.
Well, they're not trying to pilot program during the weekdays, why does it have to be on a Friday or Saturday at night? You're in direct competition with me then, at that point. I'm one bar down in the community.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all gonna go there at nine o'clock.
We wanted to talk to you, we didn't, you know, we're trying to get everything on the table.
No, I understand, I mean, if you were doing this down, let's say in downtown Riverhead, and the bid association got ahold of this on Friday and Saturday night, every weekend, I'm sure they would be fighting against it, so I mean, I can't afford, I mean, I work on a very, very slim profit margin down there.
Yeah.
And I can't afford to have competition on a Friday and Saturday night. Let's do it on a.
The only, the only thing I say to that, John, and I mentioned this to you earlier, I think the clientele that would be at this is gonna be a whole different demographic of clientele that would be at, at your place. And I'm not saying that in a negative way.
Because I've been working on, you know, working on the reputation of my bar.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, that's not where I'm going with this, that's not where I'm going with this at all, I, I don't have a problem with, with Cuddy's. Uh, what I'm saying is, this is gonna be more mom and dad and kids, this is what it's gonna be. This could be the beach crowd at five o'clock just strolling over here from the beach with the toddlers or whatever, there'll be food that they can eat. The kids can still play on the playground and mom and dad can have a glass of wine and listen to some music. That's, I think, the avenue that we're looking to approach here, we're not looking to make this a, a boardy barn atmosphere by any means.
So you would control the hours till nine o'clock?
Yes.
And down the road, how do we know it wouldn't extend past the nine o'clock hour?
Well, I think it would be last service at nine o'clock, that's, you know, that's the other, you're not shutting down at nine, you're doing last service. I'm just being realistic, it, it, so it, it, it would be, it, you know, it would be later.
My, my comparison is really Mashut, what happens down there, and I mean, that's a, that's a party that goes on.
That's a party, that's a party.
That's a risk.
That's a party atmosphere.
Is there gonna be wording in this where it cannot become that?
I think once you start looking at what the Health Department's gonna want as far as a sanitary system and a grease trap and everything else, that I think the sixty seats in this area is gonna be way outside of what the sanitary system can handle right now. And every bar stool is, you know, fifteen gallons a day. So, you know, it's, it's gonna be, I think the Health Department is gonna restrict it.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's why we wanted to try this first, to see if this is even plausible.
This, this is, this is a good small step, and, and I'm not a, I don't think twenty-eight, because, you know, you're dealing with weather and anything else, so I, I mean, it's, I, I don't, this is gonna see if it even flies, I don't know if they're only gonna get a few weekends, they're gonna even try it. But I don't think twenty-eight days could probably be half that with the weather, but, um, my, I would hope that it would become a Mashut type of thing, to be honest with you. And you talk to the businesses in, in Hampton Bays, which I go a lot to, they love it. Cause that's where people go with the, after, because they do shut down.
That's Hampton Bays.
Well, people, well, yeah.
My, my concerns is my house.
But you're in South Jamesport, I mean, where is there to go in South Jamesport?
Jim, I disagree with you. Cuddy's, there you go. Elbow Room, Corona, well, there, there are places to go. But I disagree with your statement, Jim, because I lived in Hampton Bays for twenty-six years and I know all the business owners down there from being there, they were not thrilled with that. It hurt their business because the Friday and Saturday night is their opportunity and a seasonal entity, and, you know, their prices.
Mashut was Thursday nights.
Uh, well, yeah, but they, they had.
That was their.
When the beach bar opened up there and they kept concessions going on Friday and Saturdays, they, they were not in favor of that. It became a boardy barn style outdoors, and I used to bounce at As Bay Pub, and I can tell you what happened in Hampton Bays. It's a nightmare.
Want me to clap?
My membership, since we spoke yesterday, has, um, basically, they're, they're open to a social where it's more controlled to the residents of Riverhead or the fact of, um, you know, people, you know, being outlined, residents and friends. We don't wanna publicize this where it becomes an entity on major radio stations where people from all over the county or elsewhere are coming out as a cheap venue for partying because the Hamptons is expensive.
I don't think you're gonna be able to, to do that because part of, part of what food trucks do, do, is exactly that.
Right.
You know, food trucks are social media.
Right.
You know, that is what they do.
I understand.
And that's how they gather their following, so just, I'm just putting that out there. I think, you know, when we had talked about this last time, I think one of the key things here is to have a community meeting at the George Young Center to get more input on, on how the community feels about this. Because I think this is, you know, if, if this goes forward and it is to be successful, you've sort of let the, the horse out of the barn here um, as to what it could possibly be, and I think to have the community input at the get-go, I think is really important. So I think the first step for all of this, I think this is, I think this is a really nice concept.
Why we invited the civic to be here today.
No, we appreciate that.
I understand that and I understand, not everybody's part of the civic, cause what's your membership of the civic?
Yeah, we're around a hundred.
Right, so you're around a hundred, but you have, uh, you know, there's, 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 you know, there's Laurel, there's Jamesport, there's South Jamesport, there's Aquabog. You know, there's, there's a lot of community members involved in this that aren't necessarily a member of the civic. So I think to have a community, hold a community meeting, uh, about this, I think would probably be a good idea to.
Twenty is our date, and, uh, we're supposed to have Catherine Kent coming down to discuss this matter. And, uh, we will be publicizing that on the radio and stuff like that.
I think it needs to be in a bigger venue as in more of an open forum, because I know where you guys meet, you, you know, it's not that big.
Regardless of all of that, this plan is, is, I think, soft enough and small enough that I don't think this has the impacts that we might be perceiving now down the road.
Ray, I just wanna highlight the one issue that Ray, um, had talked about was we were enforcing our parking permit regulations.
Yeah.
So, you know, unless somebody has a town of Riverhead park, parking permit for the beach, you cannot park there.
Well, I think you're looking at doing this as a service to the town, it's not a moneymaker for the town.
No, sure.
So you have the, you know, you have the people come from the area and people let us, let the town know whether this is something they wanna pursue or not. As far as I'm concerned, the, I, at the initial conversation about this, I said I always go to the, you know, used to enjoy the Cup Sog.
Right.
You know, we don't, I'd have my family on the beach and then you'd come up, of course, I like those little lobsters.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, they're always usually music and it was enjoyable, but there's a big difference between Cup Sog and Jamesport because Cup Sog's very isolated.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, sound isn't really traveling very far there, I've never been to Mashut, but I'm told that that's a pretty big party.
Well, I've, uh, gotten, since yesterday's discussion, you know, I, I mentioned it to, uh, an email through my membership
Mm-hmm.
And put it on our Facebook site, and I've gotten quite a few responses, uh, things about, you know, legality, uh, concerns if somebody got hurt there that the town is sponsoring this event, um, you know, I'm, I'm sure you guys have all, you know, these are questions that are coming to me.
Same as any day at the beach.
Right, any day at the beach.
But now that there's alcohol involved in it, how does that change that?
Yeah, they'd have to provide the proper insurances.
Correct.
Whoever's selling the alcohol and being tip certified and everything else.
Right, exactly.
And we also, my membership wants to know also, is it, is it right for the Riverhead Town or the Board to promote alcohol at a public access or a beach or an asset that belongs to the taxpayers?
Do it at Live on Twenty-Five, we do it at the Country Fair, we do it at.
Okay.
Polish Town Hall.
Again, every member of mine has the opportunity to voice their concerns, if I agree with them and not, it's irrelevant.
Right.
And I'm just bringing them to you because that's why you invited me here.
We're just giving you answers to those concerns.
Which is why I agree with the supervisor that it should be a larger venue and we should post it and every town board member should be there so that we can listen to what the community is saying.
So maybe we'll have one here then.
I think it's probably a good idea.
Okay.
My, my one concern is, is the music. Because I, I think that, that no matter what, you're going to have, to limit it to eighty decibels, I think may be a difficult task. You're gonna have generators from your food, two food trucks, right? So that's gonna be noisy.
Right.
So, and then you're gonna have music that's going to have to be louder than that, and, you know, I mean, you guys all know on the water, once that music hits, hits the water, it goes.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Well, it depends on the wind, I mean, I live way up on the sound, but I can sometimes hear Bating Hollow Vineyard as if I'm right in the yard there, it depends on the wind.
And Coop Ridge.
So music every, every night is a little concerning to me.
I, I don't have a problem with it as long as it's acoustic and no amplified music. I mean, if it's just a guitar guy or a group playing a guitar or have an orchestra or whatever.
They do it as.
They do it as.
Right, well, I thought.
So you're.
I like, I like the idea, I, I'm all for the community, I, I love this concept and I guess I misunderstood it. I, I pictured this being multiple beer trucks.
No, no.
That's the perception that people have.
That's why it's good to have this open forum.
That's the way that I read into it, so, the scale as to what you eventually will become, I like the idea. I'm all for this a hundred percent. I was fearful that it was gonna be a big party like a Live on Twenty-Five.
No.
And that would hurt my business.
This is, you know, what really spurned this thing, John, to be honest with you, what spurned this thing was years ago, when you went to South Jamesport Beach, you could go get a hamburger.
Yeah, I remember when the glasses actually had the concession stand.
Right, before the town took over, and then we can't do, it all came down to getting something more than a, you know, a Hot Pocket to eat. And that's what started, and then we said, well, maybe if we could add light out, beer and wine, not, not, not my vodka. But that's, we're trying to make it something a little more inviting, but it's really for public, I mean, it's for people who frequent that beach, it's, I, I wouldn't say it's gonna be a big, I, I don't even see it being a destination where people are gonna go all the way, it's not a.
We're actually looking to target the people that are there.
That's what I think.
You know, you go down on the South Jamesport around that time in the sunset, there's nothing like it, it is beautiful and we have a lot of families there. We just wanted to add a little something to it, you know, very, very, you know, relaxed, you know, a little guitar, even our own music, very, very light. You know, a glass of wine, just to see the sunset, that's the target, that's what we're looking at.
You should get Brady Reimer one time.
So, I'm. During that, we like that idea.
Yeah, no, no.
We're not, we're not going beyond that. Conversation before on this, but I just wanna make sure that it's not a large-scale event because we're not in favor of that.
Definitely not, no, I don't want it.
So, so how.
Licensing agreements in place, we can stop it immediately.
But how are we, how are we controlling the number of people that are, are admitted? You know, because the parking lot obviously can hold more than sixty cars, how big is that parking lot there?[1688.51]
How many spots does it have?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five, you have ninety-five spots plus you have a lot of walking.
Right.
In that area, right?
So, you could have two, three hundred people.
Correct, so, so what, what is, what is the plan in place if you do have ninety people there?
Come on, it's Jamesport.
If we get ninety people there, I'll go down in a Speedo and scare away seventy-five.
Don't forget the, the, um.
All right, that's on tape.
You're always, you are always threatening that.
No, but I, but, but you know the area, it, it's not, it would not be uncommon to have that many people there at the beach or something like that. Because even when we've had, you've had the bands in the summer, you know, you've had, you've had, you know, the, a couple of years ago, you had the Brazilian group there. I'm just gonna say there's at least forty-five people there, there for that, if not, if not more. Um, so.
Movies and the movies on the beach.
But the movies on the beach wasn't it?
Two hundred people there before.
I don't see it.
Well, like I was talking with Tim yesterday on the phone with Ray and Catherine, if it's scaled down and all, I, I would think my membership would be in favor of it.
I don't see it.
Every year we have sent you.
Uh, again, you know, some of the policing concerns, the cleanup concerns, um, you know, whether or not the town should be, you know, you know, promoting, uh, at a family event type of thing. The alcohol, these are questions that were coming in to me since we spoke.
Understood.
And as long as there is going to be fair unity and, and communication and camaraderie where it doesn't hurt businesses in our area. As well as, if it complements our quality of life, we're gonna be all over this.
Perfect, perfect summer.
That's, that's the word I was looking for.
Well, the way I, the way I look at it, and, uh, maybe I'm just an old-fashioned Riverhead guy with two hundred years here, I can tell you this. There's two things that Riverhead offers to its taxpayers. Our parks.
Right.
And our beaches.
Yeah.
And they should be showcased and they should be celebrated at every turn.
I like it.
And if that's a draw, that's only gonna help the economy.
Right.
It's only gonna help the economy for everybody around, whether it's a business or whether it's.
We bring them right to Cuddy's at nine o'clock.
Right. You pass out, you pass out flyers, hey, come on down.
I would be on, well, I don't believe you can do that.
The music continues at nine or whatever, I'm just saying.
But, uh, I, I think, I think the hours of operation is a big concern of mine.
Sure.
You know, if, I want to make sure that there would be, if this pursued.
Well, the beach closes at ten anyway.
It couldn't exceed, it couldn't exceed a certain hour because then you're really digging into my clientele. Right, or the potential, it could enhance my business, you know, it could go your way.
And Marie would add some ads.
If you wanted to that.
But I like the end result, I love the idea, you know?
Let's hear, let's hear a little legal stuff.
And I'm glad I came down to hear what exactly it was.
So, just to clarify, on the music, the recreation department would be selecting the music. The reason for that amplification provision is if Ray is unable to secure for a particular evening. He wanted to be able to put a radio or.
Like a couple of speakers that were, you know, low.
Right, so, is that, does that qualify as amplified?
If we're gonna be controlling it, then that's one thing.
It does. We are.
If it's, if it's our.
All music is under recreation department control.
Yeah, so if it's under a vendor, then the vendor, if somebody says, turn it up and they turn it up, even if it's only for a half hour till a cop gets down there and says, you're exceeding the decibel. If we're controlling the music and we're gonna control the decibel range, then I have no problem with it.
We are controlling, am I right?
We're gonna have a cop down there as well, the police chief had said.
And I think, and I'm trying to figure out how that's gonna work.
I, I would like to see the budget on this because we have police, we have extra recreation.
Actually, we have something, right here.
There you go. Well, yes, I think you guys, I think the discussion was to have a part-time police officer and some workers from the rec department, correct?
Correct, yeah, we, we were looking at, uh, at least two park or beach attendants and we met with the police chief yesterday and he agreed to.
I don't need to.
I didn't know how many people were coming, so. So, it's, and we passed the cost off to, to whoever's coming in.
It would be a four, you say four hours per night, right? So, is, are they doing cleanup also? So, people aren't gonna leave till after ten. If you're serving your last drink at nine, you can't count on everybody being out of there by nine.
Yeah, but, um. Ray, I think you, uh, when we talked about this, I think you, um, told the councilman and I that it is routine practice. Every day the beach is open, when the attendants come on, they do a full cleanup.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah.
That's standard as we sit here today.
It's like running our tournaments at night.
No, 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 but are they gonna clean them that night or the next morning?
The staff, the following morning, they always do a full sweep of the beach and bathroom.
Yeah, show you garbage will never be a problem.
So, that would stay the same. No, those attendants that are on, the goal is to keep costs down.
Yeah, I do actually.
Attendants that are scheduled for the morning would do their full cleanup.
Right, but what I'm saying is you have, you have, right, four hours, right? So, you have a beach attendant, the event is four hours, right? But at nine o'clock, everyone doesn't magically disappear. So, you're not accounting for your staff being there, who's locking up the bathrooms? Are you gonna close the bathrooms at nine o'clock?
Yeah.
So, you're serving your last drink at nine and you're closing the bathrooms at nine?
Well, we may not serve the last drink at nine.
Yeah, they may serve it at eight thirty. When you roll, when you roll up the gates at nine o'clock and the music stops and unplugs his amp and he's loading his stuff up, people are going home.
Yeah.
Yeah. We could do last four at eight thirty.
They're not, they're not leaving it, I'm just, I'm, all, all I'm saying is gotta add time.
If you were selling Scotch.
Look, it's fifty-one dollars an hour, it's fifty-one dollars an hour, so I don't think it's a big deal.
That's all, I just want the true cost of what, and who's paying for the music?
I know it.
We're gonna give it.
I'll donate it.
So, the goal is, uh, we talked about, because this was a pilot program that we would try. And because any vendor seeking to participate, particularly for the beer or wine, and we're hoping that it's local. Um, they're gonna have to pay, um, fees for an application for off-site vending for alcohol or beer. Because of that and because it was a pilot program and because we want to really encourage local businesses to participate, the goal was to keep the costs down. The reason why we ran a spreadsheet, um, is the goal is the licensee application fees would cover whatever costs the town incurred. For police, park attendants, and for music.
Perfect.
Um, but it wasn't gonna be a money generating activity.
Right, no, but it's gotta be a break even.
It was a break even.
That's fine, but it's, it's just to make sure all the costs are in there.
And that is part of the reason for the, um, two weekends per vendor. Because of the costs associated with the application to New York State Liquor Authority. Really, in order for a business to want to do this, they're gonna have to spend those costs plus our license fee, so we really want to tag.
And, and John, you could even bid on it.
Correct.
Oh, I was thinking that already.
Last night, Cuddy's comes down with a beer.
You absolutely could.
We want to promote local businesses.
No, we, we did talk about it.
And after that at your place to get the people to come down now.
Yep.
That could be a win-win for you.
I think the open forum is key to be proactive in our planning and give everybody a voice and see if this is, I mean, you guys are trying to do it sort of as a service to the community, so we see if this is what the community wants.
Yeah, we've had a lot of requests on it.
A lot of requests. And I don't, I don't even drink.
And seeing that this is a pilot program, maybe instead of doing it for twenty-eight times in the concession, maybe cut that in half and do it one week on a Friday, the following week on a Saturday. And do fourteen and see which day actually works out better.
You kinda, you kinda wanna keep it consistent, otherwise you're gonna lose people.
I just think, and we also have Race Awesome on the thirteenth, fourteenth that weekend and they jam up that whole, uh, iconic Bay Boulevard area by the beach and stuff.
That's during the day.
Yeah, but do, do we need that on top of?
Well, we can work it all out, we're, we're open to anything, you know, we want to make it work, so however it works, it works.
Is that where you're saying they need to make money?
This is just gonna serve as a play, I don't see it being the.
Exactly.
No, we can pull the plug at any moment.
But the reason why it was kind of sketched out this way, which it certainly could change.
I don't see it being a big deal.
But, for instance, if you wanted to participate, you know you're gonna have to apply to New York State Liquor Authority, you're gonna be charged a fee. So, rather than him incur that fee, not knowing if you're gonna get any return on your money.
Forty-dollar less.
The ability to give you two weekends in a row to market yourself, um, and cover your costs, that, that was the thought of selecting.
Do you have to do both nights on the weekend?
Yeah, that's my concern.
It just seems, I don't know, I, I understand what you're saying, but I think as a pilot, twenty-eight nights seems like a lot to me.
I agree with that.
You, you mentioned two food trucks, how many beer trucks would that be, like craft beers?
They're all out of the concession stand.
Okay.
So, the only alcohol can be, can be sold out of the concession stand, so you have access to the concession stand to deliver the alcohol for there, so it's more, it's more controlled than come. And these trucks would not be allowed to sell alcohol.
Okay.
So, it'd be more like a beer garden, like what we have at the Polish Fair, so that's.
Yes.
Exactly, that's what we're getting to.
Okay.
Okay.
And the chief's involved, he was at the meeting.
Yeah, he was there yesterday, he was pro.
I love it, I think that, I agree with him, you need consistency, so, and it might work out, you know?
Hey, if it gets to be too much, we'll shut it down.
Yeah, that's the beauty of it, when on our, it's shut down at any moment.
I don't think it's gonna be as big as you think it is.
I agree with you.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be.
I think the guy, I can't believe I spent the whole summer there, I only sold, you know, a hundred glasses of beer.
Yeah, I think that may be.
I, you know the neighborhood, I don't think it's gonna be an issue at all with people coming down.
I think it's gonna help, uh, as long as it's community oriented.
Maybe at first.
I don't think, I don't think for one minute, I think all the people that are hanging out on the other side, that's my other concern also. Boats, are boats going to be allowed to, to pull up on that, on that corner there, that's a deep water area? So, people can come from other areas and dock their, dock their boats there, how are we gonna regulate that?
Yeah, three boats, because you only have three Ts that stick out on the end of those docks.
Yeah, only what's legal.
Yeah, right, yeah.
No, not at the end, not at, can they, on the, you know where I'm talking about.
They do it now.
Well, that's my question, you could pull probably seven boats up there.
To the point?
To the point. So, my question is, are we gonna, is, are people allowed to pull up to the point there?
They're doing it now.
If they're at the point there, they're drinking their own stuff down there.
If it's legal, yeah.
Well, now they, now, now, but now, but now, but now they're gonna be ticketed because if we're gonna not let people out of here, you can't let that go on over there. That, just say, just say.
But if that occurs, it occurs now.
Yeah, it occurs now, it always goes on.
But no, I just wanna know, can, they're not usually there at night, so are, are people, we just need to address that.
That point is very active at night down there.
I've gone out there at five o'clock, I think.
I think they're always there.
Yeah, I wanna tell you what I did at that point when I was.
We don't wanna know.
I don't think it's gonna be a problem, I think that would make a big deal out of it and I think it's really gonna be something that, actually, and if you bid on it, it might be beneficial to you. Okay, I'm closed, come to Cuddy's.
I just think it's good to hash things out beforehand as most as we can. I, I think we should pick a date and it would be nice if Aunt Marie could come and Rec could come and engineers and the people.
Yeah, I plan to come to the Civic meeting too, if that's okay.
Well, this is, this is separate, this is separate from the Civic meeting. This is a community meeting because where you made is, 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 is too small.
Right, I agree.
So, I'm told, um, and you may even know more than me. I'm told in order, uh, to secure an off-premises liquor license, you're looking at minimum, minimum of four, most generally six to eight weeks, so.
Yeah, you can get it expedited though, you just pay a little more.
Well, I mean, this doesn't have to, if nobody applies because they can't get it by the thirty-first, if it has to start two weeks later, then it's two weeks, it's two weeks later.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll bring my six pack of Schaefer awesome.
So, my question is.
Schaefer.
Do they still make that?
When is the, when is the school break, which week, which week, do they have a break, break for Easter?
The twenty-first is Easter, so I'm, I'm not sure if it's the week before or the week after.
Do you know?
It's, it's the twentieth, it's the week of the twentieth.
Yeah, it's that week, yeah.
So, the twentieth through the twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so, then we would have to, how about if we have, uh, for, uh, Tuesday, uh, April thirtieth?
As the open forum.
As the open forum meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Is this time to publicize it?
You should pretty much strike then, uh, post Memorial Day.
I think we should do it, like, that looks good.
Could this be in evening, uh?
I think that's a good idea, yes.
Because my membership would make it.
April thirtieth, that's a Tuesday.
I'll have it in here, I think, we're having it in.
Have a beer truck outside.
We could have it here or we could have it, we could have it either here, uh, probably the senior center would probably be better.
Okay.
Um, because they have a big, they have the big room there, I think.
Yeah, okay. Six P.M.? You wanna see the month?
Do you wanna do six P.M. or six, six-thirty? I think, I think six-thirty would probably be better.
I'll take your recommendation.
I think we should have sample beer trucks outside.
Today's only the fourth, why don't we do it on like the eighteenth so that we can get the R.
Yeah, the Schaefer trucks can show up.
The eighteenth is the day before Good Friday and a lot of people go away for Easter. That's, that's, it's because of the break.
That and Rheingold.
Or Wednesday.
Rheingold.
That was a tough beer there.
I think the thirtieth is good, six o'clock right after the bid meeting.
Six-thirty, senior center.
And my membership will be with you already and we'll, we'll have some stuff hashed out.
Schaefer is the one beer that I have.
So, we're looking at April thirtieth, six-thirty at the senior center.
The George Jones Center.
Oh, senior center in, um, Aquabog.
Aquabog, Aquabog.
Shade Tree Lane.
Shade Tree.
Would be an interesting meeting.
But I would have been at the other one. George Jones Center.
So, you can strike out any mayday.
I also want to point out that, uh, some of my members have said that they think the change is good and, uh, you know, they think it's a nice idea.
Tell me, it's always a happy pace.
So, you're basically, you would start a life.
Not everybody was negative, it's a, it's a half and half.
But that's okay.
A little bit of control.
I don't know what you're gonna get.
I understand that in a minute.
Okay, so, is, is, I will.
The beaches don't officially open up, but.
We'll try and secure the senior center for that date, if not, we'll make it for another place, but the date will be April thirtieth, at six-thirty in the evening. Uh, most likely on Shade Tree Lane at the senior center.
Yeah, I'll go secure it right there.
Okay, thank you. If there's a problem with that, Ray, then otherwise we'll.
Yeah, I'll let you know right away, yeah.
And that'd be chips for Cuddy's, first drink on the house.
There we go.
Yeah.
Giving out to everybody that shows up.
May I, may I get these?
What? Yes, 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 yes. All of the stuff is right there also.
And John, uh, you're doing a good job then.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of doctor friends.
Great job.
It's gonna be more to talk about.
The band, the band last Saturday was phenomenal after the same Hattie State parade.
Yeah.
They're coming back on the nineteenth.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
You still got the pool tables there?
Yeah, it's good.
The dancers too, like, come in. Did you have the dancers come in?
All right.
The dancers, thank you. The dancers, they came down later on, we tried to have them at three, uh, three-thirty, they came.
But the big band was there.
Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Bill, John for coming, Josh.
Thanks, Johnny, thank you.
Take care. Thank you.
Thanks, good to see you.
All right, John, I'll show, I'll show up to you.
Take care.
Oh, they're all, they're not leaving.
She's, well, just bring some quarters to put underneath them, get them even.
Was it a dollar fifty again then?
I bet. All right, we'll move on to, I think Catherine just wanted to get her notebook, she will be back in one second.
Okay. Town Board Liaison Committee update, okay, that should take about a minute.
I gave my update two weeks ago.
Wow, I like it, I like it.
Saint Baldur's? Yeah. Cool, good for you.
I think you guys are way overthinking this thing.
Worthy.
Good for you. Probably not even completing the gap.
Who's had it, um?
Who's had it, um?
Saying I.
You, you gotta be kidding me.
You watch and see. I've seen this before.
All right.
Very good. You're gonna start, very good. It's not a, people gotta buy a day pass to go there, stuff like that.
Yeah, but most people walk there.
Just you and your daughter.
Are you kidding me? From, they, uh, they have a kind of, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, no, 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 they're, no, the people walk there.
Oh, that's funny.
Yeah.
I have no problem with residents.
Yeah, no, people will, people.
It's not gonna be a big draw for, you're gonna have a thousand people down there.
No, no, but I mean, just the residents themselves, there's quite a few people over there that will walk to that.
That's what we wanna take care of.
No, no, I know.
That's funny.
All right, did it, what was that?
Okay, next.
We're just waiting for Catherine to come back. She was getting her notebook, I believe.
On.
For her update.
Town board committee liaison update.
Did anybody else wanna give any?
I do have a quick.
She bailing on another one?
Go ahead and start.
Okay. Uh, update on the senior citizen advisory committee. We have put together a survey, uh, that we're looking for seniors, or actually, to define seniors for the survey, we're looking at people fifty-five and up.
What? I took it. Joe made me take it.
Listen, does shoe fits?
I'm not there yet.
Fits me. Um, doing a survey, it, it's very simple. It's like five questions, uh, just to get a little better grip on what seniors want today. Because seniors from yesteryear were content with bingo and, and maybe chierumba or chierpilates or one of those things.
Oh, good lord, oh, Friday.
Seniors today, and, and not only today, but the upcoming next generation of seniors are more active, more physically fit. Or, or more into physical activities, walking, hiking, uh, health issues, medications are making them feel better. So it, it has changed over time. So we just wanna make sure we address, um, the needs of future seniors. Because we, we see that nationwide, the trends are changing. So this will be just a, a little survey, a quick survey that you can fill out.
I like it.
There's a drop box out here on the front desk, uh, the desk in front of town hall. They're gonna be at the library, they're gonna be at the hospital, uh, they're gonna be obviously at the senior citizen center down on Shetree. Uh, they're gonna be sent around to different senior communities in town. And we just want feedback to find out, you know, what we need to do, what we need to change, if anything. I mean, maybe not, but we're thinking, cause we see the trends changing, they're more active.
Yeah, recreation as you're part of, with the pickleball and all that.
Yes, that, that's excellent point. Um, so that's what we're looking to do. So if you see this and you're over fifty-five, please fill one out.
I wanna hear more about this medication. It makes you feel so good. That's what I wanna hear about.
And, uh.
Can you download it online and mail it in?
You know what?
I'll have to work with Patrick.
Let me double check, cause I think we were looking into that.
Okay.
I, I just wanna double check with Ray on that.
We can put it on the website and then they can just click on it and, and download it. So if you get it to Patrick, he can put it on the town website. This way somebody can download it, they can mail it and mail it in if they like.
Perfect, perfect.
So we'll get that up by, uh, tomorrow.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I feel so young.
Catherine, did you wanna?
Sure. Um, last night was the first night that the newly formed environmental committee met. And it was a really great meeting. I'm very pleased with the group. It's got a wide range of, um, expertise on the committee. And I just, they identified a few things. We're working towards the goals for the committee. But we did start identifying things, the group identified things that they thought were of great importance. There was a lot of discussion about recycling and, you know, that people need to know how to recycle. We actually are discussing a field trip to the recycling plan in Iceland.
I'd like to be there as liaison to sanitation. And the school district is working on a video right now on, that we could put on channel twenty-two, the Key Club, that will explain to people how to recycle.
I know we had talked about that. So, yeah, that would be great if you came.
Good.
I was gonna see if any of the town engineers wanted to come as well.
Well, that would all help promote our new, the new standards that we're gonna be doing, right? So between the school district and what you're doing, that's a great way to get it out to the community so people will have a better idea of how to recycle.
Absolutely.
Yes.
With our new system.
So we, we have someone on the committee that used to work there, so he's going to, um.
Yeah, he's a good man. Good boy, good boy man. His name is Kenny Rothwell.
Yes, Kenny Rothwell, um, is gonna set that up. He's very knowledgeable on that. And there was a lot of discussion from the beginning of, of how important education is. You know, with environmental issues, recycling, all the different things. So we're going to be working on educating, you know, getting into the schools perhaps. Someone had offered to do a newsletter. So education will be key. There was discussion that there are several other committees that touch on environmental topics. We've got the CAC, open space, the planning board, and the energy committees. So we thought we would try to coordinate with other committees and make sure that there's not too much overlapping.
I checked with Drew and Ernesto, cause they go to the schools and do an environmental program, right?
Yes, I know, I watched that. They go to Roanoke, I think.
Yeah.
Let's see, we, we'd like to bring, bring people who work in the town onboard. That would be, you know, from the engineer, the different departments, we'd like to include them. Certainly, we need to talk about flooding and coastal erosion and the loss of wetlands. There was some discussion about how important it is refurbishing old buildings and drinking water. So those are the topics that we identified thus far. Very good.
Any other updates? No?
I still have to wash out my plastic cups before I recycle them, right?
Yes, you do. And no pizza box with guisa.
I'm, I can't believe it. Yeah, I know, it's, it's very distraught that I, I have to throw my pizza box in.
And then we had the new business community, business advisory committee that was formed. I know a couple of people had stopped into my office. So Jody, if you'd like to be the liaison with that, and I would like to join you as the liaison for that.
Sure.
We can schedule a meeting, um, with that. And also to, uh, just to announce, there are four vacancies on the business advisory committee. So if anybody would like to participate on that, they can send a resume to the town clerk, uh, at, uh, town of Riverhead, N Y dot gov. So we are accepting applications for that and we would love to, uh, to have, uh, to fill those spots as quickly as we can, so.
I think a local media should be on that too.
Yeah, that's part of the business community.
Got that right.
I just, just wanted to go back, um, quickly to the, um, environmental, real quick. I forgot to mention that we also talked about bringing someone from Buildings and Trades, um, onto the committee so that we're all onboard. And last night, Rob Carpenter came and he's going to be coming whenever he can, representing the farm committee, farming community.
Very good. Yeah. All right, if, anything else from anybody?
No, I love it. This is so exciting.
Can we, can you promote the cleanup again, please?
Yes, it's going out today. May fourth, in fact, you'll hear it on the radio because I heard.
Saturday, right?
A part over in Southampton. Well, okay, I mean, but, uh, May fourth is the Riverhead Town Cleanup starts at, uh, here at Town Hall at eight o'clock. We'll have T-shirts and goodies and snacks and bags and gloves and.
We got all the grabbers.
Hopefully get some of the grabbers back. Oh, well, yeah.
No, we got, we just, we just got a whole ton of new grabbers.